Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the May 24th committee of the whole meeting. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that is located on Treaty VI territory and Maintenance Nation, Nation number four. These are the traditional territories and ancestral lands of indigenous peoples, including Plains Creek First Nations, the San and Wachie Winewak, Rocky Mountain First Nations, Stony, Satina, Dakota, Disaline, Soto, Ma- Mountain Ma- Ma- T, Me-Chief, and many other communities that continue to enrich the land in which the town of Hinton was established. And with the sentiment called this meeting to order, council, any changes or deletions to today's agenda? Administration?
Sir, if it would be acceptable to the members of the committee, administration would like to bring a closed session of seven point one forward, which would be the introduction of proposed organizational changes.
Administration? Council, to adopt the agenda as amended?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move to adopt the committee of the whole meeting for May 24th. That's amended.
Council, any discussion? Called the question, all those in favor? Karen Yanos, I see no one in the room for citizens minimum council. Janice, are there any? Buddy online?
No.
All right, thank you. That will move us on to delegations and presentations. So we have four point one. Hinton Children Learning Center space request. So I'll send it over to the ladies at the end.
Thank you very much for allowing us to come and make this presentation to the committee of the home. I'm representing the daycare society of Edson, and the Hinton Children's Learning Center is a division of the daycare society of Edson. We're a nonprofit registered charity. We have operations at Edson, Hinton, and White Court. We run five different programs in most communities. Today, we're here to discuss. Well, I think we've sent a letter and a proposal to request more space at the Dr. Duncan Murray Center so that we may expand our operations. We have been in operation since nineteen eighty-three. We became a nonprofit registered charity in nineteen eighty-four. We moved to the community of Hinton in nineteen two thousand and two and started operating family dayclubs here in this community. And in two thousand and five, the daycare society of Edson opened the Hinton Children's Learning Center. So that center has been operational in the community for eighteen years, and we've been that entire time at the Dr. Duncan Murray Recreation Center. And I think that we've been an excellent tenant and been financially stable and viable, and we want to continue to do so. Now we find ourselves in a predicament where we have a waiting list that far exceeds almost our registrations in the in our center. This has just happened over the last few years when the funding of childcare has changed. There are now subsidies for cho- for families in the weekend, but the Alberta government has signed and agreed with the federal government for a new affordability grant. This was that proposed ten dollar a day daycare. It's going to take five years to fully bring that concept about. But because that has happened, more and more people want to use a regulated license system because that's where the affordability grant operates from. And it drops families' childcare, I'm going to say, almost in half. I just wanted to introduce a couple of people who've come with this delegation. Wendy Dunn, to my right, is the president of the daycare society of Edson. So she is responsible for all three communities and operations that we have there. And Alex Sheehan is the director of the Hinton Children's Learning Center. And I'm going to count on Alex to corroborate or clarify any answers to any questions you might have about the daycare. So I just wanted to say one more thing, and then we can get on to any questions that are happening. We have approximately thirty-two families that are on our waitlist that represent about thirty-seven children. We have parents who have registered their unborn children because they know that the waitlist is so arduous that it could be more than a year after their child is born before they're going to have a spot in the daycare. That's how close and prompt our registrations are. We definitely need more space. We really appreciate being in the location of the Dr. Duncan Murray Center. Families love it. The children can participate at the pool. We have, you know, programs that run at the at the library. If we have a big function or an event for parents, which we've had Christmas dinners.
Christmas dinners, Thanksgiving, things like that. We use the people sector.
We rent the families and.
The people sector.
The people center as well. When parents have children in skating or any other programs after daycare, they pick their children up and they use the the center. So the potential to have all of these other parents that are coming in that would come into our expanded space be users and participants of the Dr. Duncan Murray Center. We also hear that there are a couple of new opportunities in the community that have already approached Alex about whether or not they have space for their move stop. The Bliss Center.
Yeah.
And the Nobis Energy.
And the the mill. Also, I had a representative call me and ask me if we had spaces available for potential employees who are going to be moving into the area as well. Unfortunately, at that time, all I could say was we have an extensive waitlist. I get multiple inquiries a day and at least one to two actual applicants to be put on our waitlist daily. And so at the time, we did have thirty-two families. I would say that is closer to probably thirty-six, thirty-seven families at this point with roughly forty children on the waiting list.
We just wanted to emphasize as well that all of these parents that are coming and seeking childcare are people who want to work in your community and want to stay in the community of Hinton and want to be active participants in the community will become potential users of the recreation center as well. Because of course, once they come and they're using the center, they're going to see the other programs that are also being offered at this center. We have made other approaches in the past for more space. At that time, it wasn't just critical. Now it's becoming critical because we definitely feel that we're we're not providing the service to the community of Hinton that we should be.
Is that everything?
Yes. Does anyone have any questions?
Council, any questions? Counsel Taylor?
Mentioned, I'm unclear exactly what you're asking for. You asking for like a separate space for additional kids? Are you asking for one a bigger one place space for everybody to be all together? Because you mentioned the youth center here.
Yes, so currently, there's two programs that operate. There is the Family Resource Network, and there is the Youth Center, which we have noticed are not at capacity. We feel like those two programs could potentially merge together, be take tear up, tear down spaces, you know, put up tear down spaces for when they are in operation. So the Family Resource Network during the day, the Youth Center in the evenings when they're operational, and then that space could then potentially be utilized by the daycare to bring in more revenue for the town.
And I think your question, we we're fine with having spaces a little bit, so that's a fair amount of separation. It would be not a problem for us to take over the family if you allow to rent the Family Resource Center. We would put our older children over on that side, and for the parent, it would just be a little trip back and forth to drop the younger child on the older child. Um, we have that situation happening in White Court right now. We're on the Carlin Center in the community center in White Court, and we have our preschoolers in one large area with another playground area. And we have the infant toddler children on the other side. So a parent drops one child off at one large area, and then the other child off at the other area. But it's within the same facility. That would be the important thing to happen within this facility. And we are full paying leases.
Counsel LeBune?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Out of curiosity, have you had any initial conversations with administration to this point, any of our directors or staff at the facilities about the space issue and what your ideas are?
I believe we have. Have. So, yeah, we, go ahead. Sorry, you spoke into Eva Arsenal. I believe she's the facilities manager at the moment. And in the past, we've spoken to Edvet Lemo. To, let me, no, no, it says the D. Who is also a part of the administration team, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Michaels. I believe our past director has also written letters to those two parties discussing that issue. Yes.
I think, Mr. Chair, I had the same question essentially. I guess more specifically, so where are those conversations now? Like, i- is it like at a at a crossroads that there's not enough room available or or if you can fill us in a bit of where you suspect this is going?
I think there's a bit of a contradiction in what's happening at the center right now because the Family Resource Center, a family resource group is at one location, and the rent is being paid probably by a town program. And the youth program is also being paid for by a a town program. So both of those programs are either with FCSS or are they funded directly from council? I'm not sure. But those organizations would have to agree to get together and share one space. It would make it, I believe, more cost effective to have those two programs in just one center because one is operational during the day, the other is operational after school hours. Or the town of Hinton may do what the town of White Court ended up doing and changing that whole youth program because the very same thing happened there. It was underutilized, and they recognized that their youth wanted something to look a little bit different than coming to four square walls and participating in foosball and watching TV and playing games. They wanted some other type of program for themselves that would offer more skill levels, et cetera. So they moved away from that type of a program. So therefore, that opened up a space for us, and the daycare in White Court moved into other spaces.
If I can just add on to that. So this last request, I originally went through Eva Arsenal, who then directed me to write a letter to Laura Howard, who I believe is the director of Community Services, who then said that we should meet with council. And so that is where we are at currently.
Yeah, follow up. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we thank you for the the context in the background on that. And I just want to revisit one point just to make sure as we look at all the options. So it seems like there's really uh, no way to separate your group. So if there was another place in town with with, you know, through the town, or if that were to be the case, ideally, you can't separate. You wouldn't be able to 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 run two programs at two different locations. Um, or is that pretty much an absolute no for you guys?
I think at this point, it's not, you know, impossible, but at the same time, our goal is to remain at the Dr. Duncan Murray Recreation Center.
I feel strongly as well that it would be more difficult for parents having two drop offs.
Right.
Due to the fact that we're dealing with the preschool population. So if you're taking your older child who is three and a half, let's even say it was at the Yod, which is across the yard from where our daycare is, and then you're dropping your infant child, child who is nineteen months septi at the Dr. Duncan Murray Center. It's onerous. And it's, I'm not sure if anyone here has preschool children. Every child has to come with a bag and a bottle and a something else. And you're dropping one child off there. You have to bring all the children in. You can't bring children in the vehicle. You can't leave them parked out in front because you can't do that with the Dr. Duncan Murray Center. So you got to park, bring everybody in, drop one child off, get in the vehicle, go to the next center. So it's an arduous process. I think parents would have some difficulty. I mean, it's not that impossible, but I think that it might be. And if it was any further away than everybody's familiar with what the Yod is. So if it was any further away than that, I don't think it would be viable. We would probably have to start looking for an alternate space.
Okay.
Once a different building.
Thanks again.
Okay, Counsel LeBune, Counsel Reese, and then Counsel Taylor.
Uh, I'll drop out my question.
Okay, Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So if you did get a larger area, without me, you would have to hire more people, get more people in the workforce.
Yes, definitely. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Counsel Taylor.
Oh, what's your point of view on the practical reasons why you can't use the youth center? Like, it sounds like they they use it in the evening, and you would use it during the day. So what what's the reason for that? There must be some reason.
There are many daycares.
Right.
Excuse me. Yeah, there are many daycares in the province that have tear down daycares, and that's what you call that. So you would set up your um, equipment for the date for the children that you're going to be having. So from six thirty AM to six PM, we would have a center available for children. So we'd have to bring out our tables and chairs and all of our gear. And then at the end of the day, we would have to pack all that information, that gear up. And usually, it's pretty specific. If you know of any of the tear down daycares, it's all gear that can collapse and lock up and push into a corner. And then the next morning, again, it's having someone getting there at least fifteen to twenty minutes earlier to set everything back up again. Tear down daycares have a very s- specific use in different communities, just because the community might be using a hall that's appropriate for both services. And then you're constantly moving your furniture about, and you have to, it's called the, it's called a tear tear down daycare.
And that's not what you want.
It's onerous. It's arduous because you have to tear you have to buy specific equipment so that it's easier to put all of your toys away into a big shelving unit that locks up, and you you roll it into a room, a roof, specified room. It would be a bit arduous, yeah.
I think there's a lack of storage space available because they would use quite different equipment. Because I mean, I believe upstairs at the youth center right now, they have food tables and pool tables, and they've got TVs and things like that. So they would have to have space to store all their materials, and then we would have to have space to store all of our materials, which can be quite a lot. If anyone's been in the daycare, I mean, we've got lots of tables, chairs. We've got folk shelves, quiet cubes. I mean, there's just the shelving for toys. It's quite a lot.
Thanks.
For us, I think the better center would be the Family Resource Center on the other side, but we would be happy to use the youth center as well and just modify it ourselves. I'm sure we could get a grant to help modify it with the express permission of the town. If we did any, had to do any remodeling or remove a wall or or doors or things like that.
Counsel LeBune?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. My questions for administration to our ICAO. Um, Paul, this seems like a problem that is more administrative in nature, pertains to tenants and issues like space and scheduling, problem solving around the logistics of that. Is this something that that sort of needs a a direction of council or a motion of council? Or is this more of a, you know, a facilities issue that can be problem solved by working with administration?
Thank you, sir. I think if I could through the chair, I don't believe there's a motion required. I mean, this is managing existing space. Uh, I I've not been directly involved. I'd like an opportunity just to speak with staff a little bit on this and the possibility of of sharing spaces. I do understand that there's a feeling that we are at capacity for space in the building right now. We, I think where council could get involved, and it wouldn't be this year, would be in future years, future budget discussions around some of the other spaces that we have control over that could maybe not so much for this group, but could be utilized to open up some space at the rec center. But that's, that that space is currently under lease and would have to be looked at in future years. But it's space that's been identified for some of these community service purposes. And so we could be taking a look at that in future budget years. I would like an opportunity just to touch base with my staff around the concerns from the Family Resource Network and possibly the youth center and what could possibly be done there. I I did, if I could, just to the members here, if if the if the town could free up some space in the rec center, and I appreciate, it's one thing to say you've got the a waiting list, it's another seats, there's another thing to action that I'm sure. But if we could free up some space, how much time would you need to, I'm sure you'd have staffing, other equipment and so forth. How much time would you need, even if even if we could find you some space?
Uh, sixty days of us. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Stoshak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, my question's kind of a follow up to Counsel LeBune's. I wasn't really understanding why Hinton Children's Learning Center was coming to talk to council today because yeah, my understanding is exactly the same as Counsel LeBune said. This is normally an administrative thing. But it sounds like the Children's Learning Center has gone through the proper channels all the way up to the director level, and then the director had indicated that that they should talk to council. But I'm still kind of at a loss as to what action council would be expected to take regarding helping them to solve their their issues. So I think that's important too, to the, to the, if there, if there's going to be discussion with the other administrative members, perhaps some information on what role council would play in in assisting find a solution would be helpful for me at least. Thank you.
Counsel Stoshak, counsel, any other questions? Counsel Reese?
Thank you, Deputy. So just to, I'm I'm gonna say just to be clear, but I know you'll take anything. So that parents didn't have to go up and downstairs, you know, letting kids and backpacks and everything a child would need. Would you preference be the Family Resource Center?
At this time, our preference is that. Um, one of the reasons I mean, is the stairs, when you have even say a thirteen month old, and then you have a three month or a three year old. I mean, that can be a little bit difficult to juggle when you have all of their equipment and things like that. Also, I do know that the Family Resource Network is a little bit bigger than the Youth Center, which would be able, we would then be able to take care of a little bit more of our waiting list. Um, because even with both spots, we're still going to have a little bit of a waiting list because neither area is going to take care of it completely. But that would be our preference at this point. But like you said, we would be happy with either area.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel, any other questions? All right. Well, thanks for coming and sharing this with us. And it sounds like ICO Hamlin will be following with with staff and then be in touch, I guess.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
See you.
So you remember the numbers for subsidy, right, to advocate for other families that if you make a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars or.
Yeah. He was a crystal clear. He was a crystal clear. Absolutely. You can't forget the. Anybody who are under a hundred and fifty-five thousand, that's a.
All right. Counsel, any other discussion on the delegation matter? All right, we're going to move on to reports from administration, five point one, review of proposed town of Hinton's strategic plan twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five. Over to your ICU.
Thank you, sir. Page seven of your agenda package. And this is the work, of course, that we came together and did here earlier in the spring with TSI. You've all had a chance to take a look at it. I don't suppose, I certainly won't read it out to you. You've all had a chance to take a look at it. But just by way of bit of a background, it starts with the mayor's message. This is a bit of boilerplate that the mayor has not had a chance to give all of his comments and edits into. So this is a starting point that we've provided and would be typically an introductory message to this. What I'm hoping to do here today is is get the confidence of the committee to bring this back to council for adoption. And in doing that, if there's edits, changes, corrections, additions you'd like to see, that would be the chance for us to do that before coming back in June. The next page, we see pretty much just the verbatim SWOT analysis that we undertook with TSI. Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. Uh, the vision admission statement, I believe, remains unchanged. I think that we came in and utilized what the what the town had. Uh, that distilled out, we see the council's priorities, the seven priorities, and those that led to the strategic priorities, the four that are in your document, and then a breakdown of each of these. So infrastructure, organizational effectiveness, economic development, and community services. So that is the strategic plan. And I guess at this point, I'd be looking if if we missed anything, if there's any errors or or mistakes. Like, uh, thank you, sir.
Thank you, ICAO. Counsel? Counsel Reese?
Thank you, sir. So we've broken down the strategic priorities so far. Are we going to be talking about the principles? Have a conversation on each.
Um, not as part of this process, but we certainly could in the future. In a, I would, sorry, so through you to often I would see this move into a direction of kind of objectives or goals that then could be referenced to. So administration references this document in the future, there could be some of those that kind of could be determined out of inclusive collaborative customer focused engaged solution, both with safe and sustainable.
I think that's important because I would hate to give my own interpretation of what each of these means. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. If I have myself in in queue, I guess the to to speak to what you're talking about with the principles, if I recall, the conversation was there was principles was something that was in addition to the conversation and took it as kind of themes in which we take those and then transfer those over into the, what do you say, the strategic priorities. So as we're as we're looking at strategic priorities, you know, we're engaging with customer focus for all those different things. So I guess that's my my take on it. So, but that's just for me. Thank you. Uh, Counsel LeBune?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. ICAO Hamlin, is it fair to assume that the next major process then coming out of a completed and approved strat plan is to go directly to the strategic planning documentation and planning portion of things? And then that'll, I'm assuming, impact our budgetary focus for the next years?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Uh, Mayor Michaels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Following up on Counsel LeBune's question, I guess. So the the tactic component and and its influence on the on future capital plans, what's the timeline for that? Based on this. So let's say there was a will of council to pass this in the next few weeks at a regular meeting. When would we see the actionable tactics be implemented by administration, or at least have have that work done for them to begin implementing it?
Fair, yes. So we do have in June two council meeting dates before our tentative place schedule. And I say tentative, but as the tactical planning into that, we started very like. That's all. Um, so we've got two council meetings, which the hope would be to have this adopted. We've got the senior leadership and council meeting scheduled where we come together, we would jointly embrace this, explain it, understand it, better understand it. And then that leads to the following day is the tactical planning session. Out of that tactical planning session, to be very clear, one would be an administrative plan on on how we roll this out, how we take council's vision and how it affects the operations of the town of Hinton. Now, if there's any budget implications, you you had mentioned capital earlier, that would be, that would have to be, if you will, captured and dealt with through the twenty twenty-three budget process. Because obviously, we have no budget to pursue anything that's significant or major out of outside the scope of this year's budget. So the tactical planning, I would say, is going to be, we're going to have that end of June, beginning of July.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Michaels. Counsel, any other questions? Yes, Counsel Taylor.
Bless you.
Well, I got a bunch of wording changes. I don't want to get counsel with it, but there are accuracy things. So you can give them to you. Can you, can you give them to me? And you can consider them or not consider them. I don't, I don't care. But there's stuff that's repeated. Something's inaccurate. It's changed, it's changed. Other than that, the only thing that's missing here was that they could Bernie Frye or mentioned, and that was he introduced all of relationships. As a, if you say, I don't know what he said, but we did, we did mention that was out of strength because our mayor gets along really well with our mayor. So instead, it's a strength. One of the things maybe we need to work on is provincial relationships. This is getting along better with the provincial government. It looks wasted down. So those would be my suggestions for additions. But that's only a bit.
Counsel Taylor, do you want to, I'm assuming, be a motion or a direction of council through my conditions? Or go back to contractors, I see. How would you like to? I'll give you with that, if we want to add something.
Um, so the the document does reside with with TSI. They've still got. So the the document does reside with with T S I. They've still got the format that can be edited. So I would suggest that I could take those, I could check with them. I know their comment on strength, weakness, opportunities, threats. This was just what they gathered up that day and just they did. They haven't edited it. They haven't. They just, they took it, wrote it down, and they put it down here. But that said, if we missed anything. To Counselor Taylor's comment, then I think that that is something that should be captured and brought forward for the final draft. However, if we're talking about adding something that wasn't part of that two day session, then I think that needs a little more fine tuning of the seven members here. Again. It's just that it was something that the one person I commented with this. That I have to agree with.
All right. Thanks, Counsel Taylor. Counsel, we're good.
Yeah, just to speak to Counselor Taylor's comments, I would agree. I think. The opinion that Mr. Kreiner put forward, it's, I think it's pretty on point and it's low hanging fruit, something we could add fairly easily.
So myself in queue, I guess my struggle is is that I I don't disagree with it, but it didn't come out of those two days. A lot of things come out of those two days. So I'm. Assuming either things are okay, going well, or it's part of every day. I mean, I, when I look at it, I look at our partnerships under strengths. Whether that's partnerships with municipalities, whether it's with provinces, whether it's, you know, organizations with our communities. You know, I guess it falls under that without specifically stating it. But I mean, I I agree if however, if we're gonna change it, then. It needs to be obviously a decision of council because this was, this whole document is based on our work we did those two days. So. Those are my thoughts. Counsel Stasich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And my thoughts are kind of aligned with Counsel's. I appreciate the input from from Mr. Kreiner. His input's always insightful. But he wasn't a participant in that two day exercise. We talked about a lot of things. And then we did talk about intermunicipal relationships and intergovernmental. And then we went undertook the prioritization exercise. And there's a lot of things. Part of the goal of this was to help streamline our strat plan for this term. So unfortunately, not everything can make it into the strat plan. So I feel this is a pretty good representation of the prioritized list that we came up with. So if there are gonna be changes, I I would. I would have to, I would, I would have to make sure that they are changes that are supported by the direction of council, not just a conversation.
Counsel Stasich. Counsel, any other questions or comments on the document or any direction to be given? You have your recommendation, Counsel. We're good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to take the recommended action that committee recommends council adopt the attached. Town of Hinton Strategic Plan twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five at the June seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting with council.
Thank you, Counsel. Would you like to speak to it?
No, you know, I I think for the most part, everybody has. I'm happy with the work and the input everybody's had in the process. Looking forward to seeing it at regular council.
Hi, myself, and I I will be in support of this direction. You know, when I think of a strategic plan, I. I really, you know, comparing it to past years, this is more streamlined, I believe. It's, I think, an easier document. That we can use both tactically for administration and for council as well. You know, I really appreciated the exercises that we went through. And I look forward to. Hopefully moving this backwards. Thank you. Counsel, yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be in support of this. I think it captures very closely what we we intend. I I actually do agree with Counselor Taylor. Some of the wording could change. I would. I would have supported something of strengthening regional relationships because I think we do have good regional relationships. But we didn't really discuss our relationships provincially. To me, there's, I don't know how many lines here, sixty, seventy lines of different things. I think it encaps. It encompasses everything. But truly, this is just another document. If we don't get the tactic. Part executed and tying it to our five year capital plan and with. Potential budget implications on the operational changes needed in order to influence this. So to me. I like this part of it, but I'm excited for two meetings in June to really find out how we're going to do this, what it's going to cost and how it's going to. Effect other documents that actually push, you know, decisions every year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels. Counsel Taylor.
Yeah, my comment would maybe be for the mayor. Would you consider writing your introductory remarks? To maybe mention why this strategic plan is different than the other strategic plans in the past.
I mean, actually, thank you for for that. With that flexibility in the message, I think I can take any other, like the comments spoke to today. And if there's anything else, please share those with me as an opportunity before we finalize this, that I think that's one way to to miss. Or to add whatever's been slightly missed, I I can add into that message also. So I think that's a good idea. Thanks.
Counsel. Counsel Stasich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a process question. It's similar to what Counsel Taylor said earlier. The odd typo and things, you know, things that are repeated and stuff like that. I'm assuming this is gonna get a polish before it comes back to to regular for final approvals, correct?
That is correct. That was the hope of what, excuse me, through you, sir. That was the hope of what we would do here today. Is to capture those things that required polishing correction and that to bring something back that had the far greater support of council. For June seventh or twenty first.
Can I follow up? Yes. Sorry, if that's what you wanted this exercise to be today, then is the expectation that we go through all of those things and. Try and capture them all, or can we just leave that to administration to make sure it's renewed and edited and polished as long as the. Content isn't substantially changed?
I I believe we can do that if there's anything. And again. The turnaround with Erica thus far, this has already had a couple of looks at it. She's made the changes and she's always got it back within a day. So. We've got two weeks now to the June seventh meeting of council. So. We should have time to hopefully polish it up and have those in place. And then even if June seventh, if council notices anything else, we've still got to the twenty first before. Really need the adoption in terms of the tactical planning of those sessions later that that week.
Counsel, the words to see here. All right, counsel, then we'll call this the question then. Thank you. The committee recommends council adopt the attached town of Hinton Strategic Plan twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five. The June seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting of council. All those in favor? And then it's passed unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Great. So that brings us. We're gonna move on to reporting now. So counsel report. So start with.
Sorry, I have a question. Actually, I got through this. I guess you get a chance to.
Your question, sorry, Counsel Taylor.
So the tactical part of this comes around. So so the tactical is that third week of. The third week of June, when the consultants come back and they do. They do have a session with staff. No, they haven't got that yet.
Anyone else have any further comments or questions on this matter? All right, then we'll move on to counsel reports and I'll start with Counsel Stasich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have anything to report since our last council meeting, so nothing to say except.
Thank you, Counsel Stasich. Counsel Reese.
Sir, the only thing I have to report is last two, last Thursday, I attended the Intermunicipal Assembly Committee meeting. Good meeting, lots of gardening conversation and we had an interactive session.
Counsel Reese. Counsel Taylor.
I attended the. Northern Rocky Museum AGM and. Really much to report of that. They got our money, so they're thankful for that.
Thank you, Counsel Taylor. Counsel Burge.
Quite a week, but last Wednesday I did attend the Parkway to the Park presentation. Very. Well done. They do have some challenges before them. But I mean, it's. The the general feeling in the room so positive around that project. I just. The the committee's done such a such a great job on that.
Mayor Michaels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did our Evergreens strap planning session. So two days there. We didn't change a whole lot from a board perspective. I think we're quite content with building better capital facilities in. All the areas within Evergreens. But the only thing that was changed was a slight shift in the management approach and opening up that. For different options, whether it's affordable housing, other needs that our six municipalities face. To look at those partnerships and have it connected to seniors, but not exclusive only. So the focus remains seniors. Lodging, but with affordability and other issues that we face because the Evergreens Foundation is an extremely great managing body. And many municipalities are are struggling with, well, okay, if we're going to implement, who's going to manage these quasi. Housing units. And if it's not an individual in the community or somebody who who has that skill, it often falls to Evergreen. So. There's there's appetite to gently and slowly go into expanding what our mandate is, which was, I think, good because. I think we face many issues in our municipality outside of just senior housing. So that that was really good. And operational efficiencies. If you haven't met Corey LeDrew, he's really great at his job. A lot of the focus was. The efforts they've spent in the last year trying to bring, you know, ordering efficiencies, buying from different suppliers, suppliers, buying from. You know, Alberta Farms, kind of changing the status quo on how they order food and try to connect all the lodges in Alberta. To to save money essentially. So operational efficiencies and the greater scope is sort of the two key changes from the Evergreens. From a strategic perspective. So that was pretty much it. I will send and invite the council this Friday at five P M. King Drug is doing their ribbon cutting for their soda shop. So because of COVID and things like that, if you haven't went down, I invite all of council to join me at five o'clock. For their ribbon cutting, but another successful business venture in our community. So looking to support that. So again, Friday at five o'clock. And that's all for me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels.
I ask a question on Evergreen, please. Was the financial sustainability question addressed, like I mentioned before, it's gone up three hundred percent. Will we pay on? Taxes for the Evergreen Society in this year went up eighteen point nine percent. And I'm not saying that, you know, getting all these facilities is not a good thing. I'm just saying, in five to ten years, if we keep that eighteen percent per year. We're gonna be at this charge costing twenty percent of our taxes. It's already ten percent. So what level are we all ultimately shooting to subsidize senior housing to twenty, thirty, forty, fifty? Hundred percent of our provincial taxes that we pay? Was that a question addressed at all?
Mr. Chair, yeah, we talked about our long term capital and. Because of the major capital investments that were done in the last five years, a hundred rooms in Edson, a hundred rooms in Hinton. Right now, we only have planned for the next twenty years, three hundred and twenty rooms across all six areas. So that cost, if you divide it over over twenty years compared to the the Victor Lake project that we're currently doing, which is only twelve units, but a hundred and one in Hinton, a hundred. At the Parkland Building in Edson. We're going to be. Doing less capital than previously, which lends itself to what I said, that we focus on, okay, what can we do operational now? What can we do? For to offer different services, management services, which bring in revenue. So to answer your question, I think the, I think we're scaling down on the. Extensive capital expenditures in building because our bricks and mortar throughout Yellowhead County, Hinton and Edson. Are now kind of caught up because of the major bills that we've done. So I I hope that.
So the taxpayers could look forward to in the next ten to twenty years and scale down to five hundred thousand dollars per year. Capital churches, they're getting church.
Yeah, the way it's, the way it's, it's, it's delivered now or or planned out for the next twenty years is absolutely yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Not to put you on the spot, because I do have a question in regards to being a strap plan. But was there any discussions on staffing? You know, when we're adding healthcare in that area is struggling in their community. And I guess, is there initiatives for. Staffing that amount of rooms and making sure that we have that sustainability?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I, do you mean just like general staffing for building a lodge and being.
Well, when it's for the medical staff that's required within there. So when they, you know, when they have all these rooms and and they have to provide a certain level of staffing for. Whether it's telepans or things like that. And I know they work with A H S, but they also have to have on site. And. I just am familiar with that. There is a hard time staffing, say, the continuing care center here, you know, and are they struggling at all in that area? Was that a discussion to have? That was part of the strat plan?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not part of the strat plan, but more of, I'll give a high level sort of response of of how Evergreens approaches that. If if, when working with A H S, if they're going to do an S L four and get that kind of support, the provincial money is there to support it. That's actually a good thing. It's it's getting the okay from the provincial government. But once the provincial government or A H S confirms that they'll provide that level of care. It's no longer a stress on Evergreens really because they're getting that funding for it. Now, I guess it begs the question that I guess. We could be short of of nurses and things of that nature. We haven't heard of that. So. Yeah, I'll ask Kristen maybe some insight on if we go down that path more and more, are we going to be short staffed? But. Nothing's been mentioned to the to the committee or the board of directors regarding that being an issue.
No, that's that's perfect. I I just, you know, because I mean, it's, they're also billing in a couple of areas, Grand Cash, you know, and and then Wildwood. You know, just those areas. And it's just, you know, it just something that I I wasn't certain on what their plan was to make sure that happens. But that's, I appreciate that.
So so if I can follow up now to those locations, it makes it more challenging naturally. If you're gonna, but Victor Lake is twelve units, the staffing, I. I wanna say it's around twenty with part time staff. Those areas generally are an issue, right? Like that's. But A H S aside, like provincial funding, people will go to those higher paying jobs generally all the time. But. In Wildwood, I think strategically, they wanted to put it in an area where there was a high need and it's still close enough to Evans and and Whistle. So they they believe that that will be a staffing issue there. Grand Cash, yeah, that is, that is more of a, more of an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Clearly, though, it's the case that Evergreen just supplies the space. They don't have any medical. In place.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, Counsel Magu, then.
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And I just have a short, so I I too attended the youth council meeting and we had a great. Planning session for the garden at the museum. That was the decision of the group that that's what they'd like to tackle. So we had an opportunity where Counsel. Race shared with her some expertise there in planting. And then we planned on times when to get the soil ready. You know, and we're looking to get more youth involved and just keep the council or the youth council, but to invite students from different schools. Want to join in. So also attended the candle vigil for the National Survivors last week, or sorry, I should say the National Victims and Survivors Week. It was a small turnout, but it was nice. Was able to have a couple of people speak, R C P and. Would have been nice to see a few more people there, but that's how things go and had dinner as well. So. And that's all I have to report. Other than we have no meeting next week, so looking forward to attending the F C M in Regina. Through the second to the fifth and see what they have to offer there. So, thank you. All right, moving on then. So on to Chief Administrative Officer reporting.
Thank you, sir. Not too much since last Tuesday. I did want to share that have. Thank you, sir. Not too much since last Tuesday. I did wanna share that have had the opportunity staffed night to meet with the members from the Legion earlier today. So this was a follow-up to last Tuesday's delegation. They're, they're quite satisfied with the options that have been provided to them. My apologies if there was any confusion coming out of last Tuesday. They are aware of the need to pay their taxes, and the town administration with the support of council is looking at options on how that can be reimbursed. And then as Counselor Taylor recalls to his direction, he will be bringing up a report back to look at options for future years on how this could be maybe, limited this just to the Legion, but options in future years on how we could possibly work with some of these groups in the town, so.
Counsel Jim?
Do you mind briefly summarizing the top two options?
For this year or long-term?
For the Legion.
But for this year's payment or in the future years, sorry, the two top options? Okay, the, the option this year for the payment is our, is our community grant program?
Well, they can apply.
They can, well, they can't apply, you can't reimburse taxes under that program. But they're gonna bring another project that they were planning to pay for and apply for that. So it's just, instead of the money going here, the money goes here. And so they were quite happy with the support, and Alexa spent a good amount of time with them helping with that grant application, and she'll be meeting with them again tomorrow. The timeline's quite tight to make sure that that comes together. Okay. The other option, which is, is less desirable, honestly, is to come back before council and ask council to waive the taxes, which council has the ability to do, but, you know, quite honestly, I, I'm not terribly interested in it. I'm hoping there's options available to groups short of doing that, putting council in that position. Just for, they know that if they apply for the community grant program, that's not necessarily guaranteed. There's a process there.
Counsel Reese?
Okay, I'll answer my question. Okay, thank you.
Right, anything else for I C O Hamlin on reporting? Status report? Um.
I think probably not too much right now that I can share, you know, with my shirt.
Okay. Alright, so we're gonna move on to the action pending list, and Counsel, do you have any questions on the action pending list? Counsel Taylor?
The second page, I think quite understandably, not questioning, I just don't understand it. N B twenty-one thirty-six. Counsel's direct administration to pursue option three is preferred approach. Platform partnership approach in the development of the town last. Is this where we said, what is this? I'm just confused as to what it is. Is this Francisco Phase One versus? Apologize, sir. I'm taking a look at this as well, and you'd have to take a look at the agenda pack for that date to confirm what option three was. Because this is in progress, so if it's going to Phase One, pretty close, please, but. Just don't understand it. I will, I will secure, provide stuff.
Mr. Steve Campbell?
I C O Hamlin, Mr. Russo's, uh, is, has just with us, and I did want to ask that question. It is an old motion from twenty twenty. See the date on there, so it's a.
I can, if I may, it's, it's, Mr. Russo has, but from my recollection on this in the past, when we had this conversation, there was options brought to us, whether we want to get into the development or how do we wanna, how do we wanna go about going the process through this land, and that we landed on the fact that we want to work with other organizations and developers, as it says collaboratively, to see, to build on that or develop that area. So that was, it was through, and we did achieve one of the grants. You know, they went through the Housing Rapid Initiative, but I think that was the one that was over oversubscribed to, but, but that was the, I believe, the motion of council in the past was that we wanted to move forward with, with those partnerships. Now, the rest, Counsel Stashik, can chime in. That's how I recall it.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. My recollection is that this is, to be connected to the development of Phase One and the grant funding that we got from CMHC. And the reason it's still here and still in progress is because it hasn't been finalized yet.
Counsel Taylor?
Yeah, that's good enough. I hope you have any further updates just to tell managers.
Any other matters on the action pending list, Counsel? Or on the action list as well, any comments or questions on that?
Sir, if I could just, on action pending, Counsel Reese had asked last week, and I apologize for the good fight, the email, the status of the traffic, an update to the traffic bylaw.
Yes.
Um, so did some investigation on that, and there was actually a motion from two thousand and eighteen, but it was struck because it just, it didn't get completed, it didn't get done. So at this point, there, there is no work being done on the traffic bylaw. Doesn't mean that we can't revisit the traffic bylaws, but currently administratively, there, there is no action on the traffic bylaw occurring at this time.
Counsel Reese?
Thank you, sir. Any update on the non-residential tax incentive bylaw?
It is coming, so I'm dealing administratively with two applications for this tax year, and the bylaw is coming back. I apologize, one of the, one of the June meetings, I think it's.
On the twenty-first.
So, thank you. It's coming back on June twenty-first.
Thank you.
Do I have a follow-up?
Yes, Counsel Taylor? Thought we'd already asked that. Didn't last council pass that?
They did. So what are you trying to perform? So there are some amendments needed to that, to that incentive bylaw. It was, when it was originally passed, it, it was really, it was year-specific. It, it didn't, it didn't. So it, we wanted to do this more than just in year twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. So Debbie and her group are pulling some amendments together. The Pope essentially allowed this to roll and move forward, and so council can always be considering applications, and applications can be received that will still allow it to move forward.
Great, Counsel, any other matters on action pending? Alright, we'll move into the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make that motion to a closed session.
Alright, move to, move into closed session. All those in favor? Fast, so we'll close session with a five member. Thank you.